Good evening. This June 28, 2018, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Franklin Band and Orchestra Camp's Blue Orchestra under the direction of Stephen Mathi.
... to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic of America, one nation, one God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
on all summer long. Ms. Hines, I think, wanted to say something.
Yes, one of my neighbors, my neighbor Colin, was playing the cello in the back and his mom, Kasha, is here. The bass, sorry, the bass, I knew that. Anyway, it's wonderful to see you, a nice surprise. They did an amazing job.
Great. Well, thank you very much, parents, for bringing your children tonight and sharing their wonderful music with us. Thank you very, very much. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on June 28, 2018, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Palchak, seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And with Mrs. McLaughlin away from the table, are absent this evening, and Ms. Evans also absent this evening. Also, I do want to welcome Dr. Phyllis Pajardo from Fairfax City Superintendent, and John Buttram, and Carolyn Pitches, who are also here. Thank you very much for being here. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to the School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs upon under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meetings webpage. And please turn off or silence your cellphone. Now, we are very pleased and excited. We have a new Deputy Superintendent this evening. Okay, we found it. First, I need to give the gavel to the Vice Chair.
I call on Mrs. Strauss for a motion.
Great. And I am very excited to officially approve and move our brand-new Deputy Superintendent. So here is the motion. "I move that the Board appoint Frances Ivy as Deputy Superintendent authorized the Chair to sign the employment contract on behalf of the Board according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session."
Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. We are, the Board is unanimously excited and looking forward to having Dr. Ivy be our new deputy, and Ms. Ivy, are you? There you are! She is there. Dr. Ivy is sitting there in her official spot. I have known Dr. Ivy since she was at Herndon High School over 20 years ago. Many of us have worked with Dr. Ivy in her various roles in Central Department and as Regional Assistant Superintendent, and I believe one of my colleagues said she is the Board Whisperer. She has a reputation for listening carefully, for making excellent decisions that truly have a positive impact on our children in our schools. She will be a compliment to the talents of Dr. Braybrand, and we very much look forward to your taking on this position. And I know Mr. Moon would also like to provide some comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. I have also known Dr. Ivy for more than 20 years, just like to Mr. Strauss, and she is such a calming, calming voice that even though I try to maintain my calmness as much as possible, sometimes I do fail, but she is very patient in listening to me, and also, at the end of the conversation, I can exactly figure out why she's making certain decisions in a certain way, and be able to help me out and help me become a better School Board member. And as Superintendent Dr. Braybrand commented in the closed session earlier today, earlier this evening, she is certainly, I can concur with him, I think all of, all the Board members unanimously concur with the Superintendent that she had to be the first pick in the first round of the draft. And I also want to congratulate her husband that, that, that I know, when, you know, someone like a Dr. Ivy, for someone like a Dr. Ivy to be there to work for us, there has to be someone behind her to be supportive. And her husband, two of the best, a fans of high school basketball team, basketball games, and I always enjoy being with him and watching basketball games, and congratulations to you. And I believe that Dr. Ivy, that you are the first, first African-American Deputy Superintendent in Fairfax County Public Schools system. Thank you.
So I'm now going to call for the vote. All those in favor of appointing Dr. Frances Ivy as the Deputy Superintendent effective July 1, 2018, and authorizing the Chairman to execute a contract reflecting this action. And that vote is unanimous with all those present this evening. Now, Dr. Braybrand, would you like to make some remarks on the introduction of Dr. Ivy?
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. It's really an honor tonight to present to you Dr. Frances Ivy as the next Deputy Superintendent for Fairfax County Public Schools. She served as the lead Regional Assistant Superintendent for the last two years, working very closely with the deputy. She spent seven years as the Cluster and then the Regional Assistant Superintendent for two different geographic areas of Fairfax County, working with teachers and parents and students and community organizations. She's also had three and a half years as the Director of Curriculum, K-12 Instruction in one of our departments, doing an amazing job there, monitoring student achievement across our entire school division, and setting the bar in our elementary, middle, and high schools for instruction. And beyond all of that central office experience, she had 16 years of school-based experience as a teacher, a Special Education Department Chair, an Assistant Principal, and is Principal of Herndon High School. She's also been an FCPS parent. She is someone that has an amazing reputation for integrity and ethics, and she is going to be an advocate for excellence, equity, and outstanding service here in Fairfax County. Finally, I want you to know as part of hiring a Deputy Superintendent, personally, she complements my strengths. She's a great listener. I think I'm a good listener, but she's a great listener. She's very deliberative, she's very thoughtful, she's very structured, and she is going to do an outstanding job in Fairfax County Public Schools as the next Deputy Superintendent. So it is my great privilege and high honor to introduce to you the new Deputy Superintendent for Fairfax County Public Schools, Dr. Frances Ivy, for some remarks.
Madam Chair Strauss, members of the Board, and Superintendent Braybrand, thank you for your kind words and belief in my abilities. It is truly an honor and a privilege to accept the Deputy Superintendent position. I feel that my background and varied leadership experiences have prepared me extremely well, and I am eager to get started. I stand before you, representing all of the mentors, the leaders, the colleagues, the friends, and family members who have supported my leadership journey, and I am thankful for their guidance and their support. After 25 years of service, I'm deeply committed to Fairfax County Public Schools, to Dr. Braybrand, his Cabinet, the leadership team, our region hearings and activity offices for whom I'll be working most closely, and I'm committed to our principals, our schools, our students, and families across our county, our School Board, and our city and county offices. I have dedicated my entire career to work in the field of education with my number-one goal to have a positive impact on the lives of students and ensuring access and opportunity to high-quality instruction. It brings me much joy to serve in the deputy role with a committed focus on excellence, equity, effectiveness, and high expectations across FCPS so that every child graduates with the portrait of a graduate outcomes necessary for post-high school success. I look forward to a smooth transition and working closely with everyone in this new role, and I truly appreciate all of your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, an excellent choice, and thank you, Dr. Ivy, for accepting it. Yes, and I think we would like to take a picture with all of us, and your family, too.
I know Karen will take good care of you.
Okay, looking right here, nice big smile. One and... Perfect. Thank you so much.
Darnett Kofax for a resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am honored to present the Virginia School Board Association Business Award to Trade Master Service. Trade Master Service Corporation, or Trade Masters, has partnered with the Career and Technical Education Team at Edison High School Academy since the year 2000. Trade Masters is a locally-owned and operated HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and contracting and facilities management company. David Kyle, the owner of Trade Masters, is a former Edison Academy HVAC student who participated in his apprenticeship training through the FCPS Adult and Community Education, or ACE, program. Now David and his 100-plus technicians are acing their partnership by regularly providing guest speakers and HVAC demonstrators, many of whom also graduated from the Edison Program. They are giving significant financial support to the school's career development programs, including apprenticeships, mock interview service days, and career fairs. They're providing HVAC supplies and materials, including a compressor, all valued at about $8,000, and this is just last year's contributions, and they are providing paid membership for the Edison Academy HVAC Program to be a member of HVAC Excellence, the largest HVAC professional organization in the world for education programs. This partnership has expanded opportunities for students, supported the FCPS Academy Program's connection to business and industry, and annually supports some 60 HVAC students, helping make this an authentic workforce development partnership. The efforts of Trade Masters' team to establish, grow, and sustain such a meaningful and relevant partnership that directly supports the work of our academy classroom teachers is to be commended. Thank you to the entire team at Trade Masters, and congratulations on being named a Virginia School Boards Association 2018 Business Honor Role recipient. And now, before we clap, I have the actual resolution. Whereas Fairfax Public Schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly-educated workforce, and whereas Trade Masters Service Corporation employees have dedicated their time, energy, and resources in support of increasing career awareness, student engagement, and real connections between school and work, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names Trade Masters Service Corporation to the 2018 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Role, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous. Thank you very much.
And now, please join me in welcoming the owner of Trade Master Corporation, David Kyle, who's the CFO, Beth Kyle, Kathy Townsend, Beth Downey, and Joe DeCio, who is the manager of FCPS Trade and Education, for a photo with the Board.
Nice big smile, Colin. And it's perfect. Great, thank you, Karen.
Palchak for a resolution.
Since its arrival on the healthcare scene, Innovation Health has been an engaged business partner with Fairfax County Public Schools. Beginning in the spring of 2015 with a school-based partnership at Pine Spring Elementary School and Falls Church, and expanding in the fall of 2017 to nearby Westlon Elementary, Innovation Health supports students with needs based donations, health education, and arts program, and a general volunteering program. Over the years, Innovation Health has provided considerable time, effort, and resources for weekend food programs, school supply and backpack drives, an arts trading and display program, Read Across America guest readers, which included many of us, and other donations like winter wear, health, and hygiene items, and more. In December of 2017, Innovation Health made a sizable and generous donation to the Foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools of $164,974 to expand the comprehensive FCPS Safe Routes to School program. Safe Routes to Schools educates students on safe walking and bicycling, encourages students to use active transportation, and partners with the Fairfax County Department of Transportation and Fairfax County Police Department to keep students safe while walking and bicycling. Additional bicycles were needed to teach more students, so an Innovation Health donation fully funded this program at 10 additional elementary and five middle schools, including the purchase of helmets and a storage shed at each school. Innovation Health's approach to partnering is also to be lauded. By supporting an existing FCPS program, we move from possibilities to pedaling in three months. Thank you to the entire team at Innovation Health for giving your time, efforts, and resources in supporting the health and well-being of students at so many of our schools. Innovation Health, you are now a recipient of the 2018 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Role. And now for the resolution. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly-educated workforce, and whereas Innovation Health employees have dedicated their time, energy, and resources in support of increasing student achievement and wellness at Pine Spring and Westlon Elementary Schools, and a sizable donation to purchase bicycles for 15 schools to support the FCPS Safe Routes to School program, therefore, be it, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names Innovation Health to the 2018 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Role. Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous.
I apologize. Please join me in welcoming Chief Financial Officer Nanette Henderson, Chief Medical Officer Sunil Budrani, Armando Perry, Principal of Pine Springs Elementary School, and Michelle Doyle, Assistant Principal of Westlon Elementary School, to the dais for a picture with the board. Thank you.
I will call on Ms. Keys-Gamaro for a resolution.
Your mic?
Here, your mic.
Okay. Rarely do people say they can't hear me. As an association of various businesses in the Business Park in Chantilly, the Westfield Business Owners Association could easily sit idly by and support only the businesses it represents. Instead, they see Westfield High School as a partner in the work that they do. The Westfield Business Owners Association supports the school in several impactful ways and has done so since 2014. Last year, the association assisted the school's Hungry Kids Program by providing $3,000 in financial support to the students who otherwise might go without a meal. They supported the Westfield High School Project Graduation Program by providing food during the testing weeks, provided $500 to the Westfield Pyramid Art Show for student scholarships. They donated furniture, including teacher chairs and conference tables, and also shedders, paper, a 10-station laptop cart, and 14 laptop loaners, plus school supplies and backpacks, all valued at about $90,000. They assisted in the celebration of students with special needs at the annual picnic celebration, sponsored judges for the annual science fair, and support the senior mentoring program called We Step. They gave $3,000 in scholarships to the school's graduating senior scholarship fund. We extend a genuine thank you to the Westfield Business Owners Association from this school board, and on behalf of all of the staff members and students at Westfield that you supported. Thank you, and congratulations for being a selected member of the 2018 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Roll. And now for the resolution. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many school businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas Westfield Business Owners Association employees have dedicated their time, energy, and resources in support of student wellness, academic achievement, the arts, and workforce development, increasing student awareness, achievement, and career readiness at Westfield High School, therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names Westfield Business Owners Association to the 2018 Virginia School Boards Association's Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. I so move.
Seconded by Mr. McAlevin. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous?
Please wel-
Oh, sorry. Did you want to speak?
That's fine. Ms. Hill's away from the table.
Please welcome Westfield Business Owners Association President William Keach and Westfield High School Principal Dr. Tony Copeland for the- please come to the dais for a photo with the board.
Okay, looking right here for two nice big smiles. One and two. Thank you so much.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the board, and we have two video testimonies. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with a decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home. So, language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us this evening. The first speaker is Mike Nie. Is Mr. Nie here? No? Okay. Then Monica Cameron? Fred Costello?
So, do I have nine minutes?
No, you have three.
Okay. As you well know, sharks go into a frenzy when they sense blood in the water. Murderers go into a frenzy when they stab somebody 17 times. And you, your school board, are in a sex frenzy. Your FLE program replaces the true caring culture, the sacred relationship among love, commitment, and sex, with a simplistic, hedonistic, depersonalized, perverted activation of sex organs. You may not have yet reached 817 rulings, but you have reached over 180,000 students who are suffering from your frenzy. You ignore data, now implying that abstinence is not 100% safe. You repeatedly contradict science, now stating that sex is not assigned by biology, but by someone's feelings, only for human beings, of course. Forget prenatal sonograms. Tell the obstetrician what sex to assign. Isn't that an insane idea? The Fairfax Times article, in the June 14 decision he made, prompted a woman to grab her head and say, "That's insane!" Indeed, it is. You've become the high priest of this insane culture dictating what is right and wrong, contradicting God and most parents, then impose your dogmas on our children and unsuspecting parents. Your evil actions blind your common sense. Our eternal general, Mark Herring, a Democrat like you, claims that a newborn baby's body is not that of a human being if it is stillborn. He can't tell by looking at it. I'm sorry about Mr. Talcov's daughter. I listened to her presentation just before I came here. Do the 10 of you have similar children? Is that why you voted to turn the world upside down so your children would seem erect? All of you are so secretive about your philosophy, religion, and family that we would never know. Counsel your children in coping with life stresses. Atheists and agnostics have no compelling arguments against suicide, but the rest of us do. Join us. Our children suffer now and will suffer their entire lives because of the insane or in charge of the institution. My children say, "Beware. What goes around comes around. Justice will be served. God will get you." The atheististic philosopher Immanuel Kant said, "We should behave as if God exists." You don't. Stop. Take some quiet time to think about the road you're traveling, and it's the road to hell. Turn back. Get counseling, perhaps from the clergy. Reverse your ruling. Reorient FLE to teach how to be good parents and good spouses. You can do it.
The next speaker is John Murray, to be followed by Mariel Ramirez-Holken.
Good evening. John Murray with ParentAndChild.org. What's the connection between ParentAndChild.org and the Caring Culture Report? Both share at least one goal: Students will be encouraged and supported in making healthy life choices. The school board does that through classes, curricula, and conduct codes. My group through the ParentAndChild.org website, which identifies FLE lessons which are detrimental to students' physical or emotional well-being. The question is, does family life education encourage and support students in making healthy life choices? In some lessons, yes. Ninth grade students learn, healthy choices may mean attending only parties that are alcohol-free. Every parent, every school board member, everyone in this room, and let us hope every ninth grade student agrees with that sound and potentially life-saving advice. You're the school board responsible for the FLE curriculum. If that curriculum results in 13,000 ninth grade students learning to avoid alcohol-fueled parties, then 13,000 ninth grade students may avoid some very devastating consequences. 26,000 parents will thank you. Yet those same 13,000 ninth grade students will also take a lesson that says, "Our next activity will help you see the risks and benefits of premarital sexual activity." Really? Advantages of premarital sexual activity? The same 13,000 ninth graders will also learn, as perfectly normal, as one choice among many, a form of sex which WebMD says is "the riskiest form of sexual activity, highly susceptible to tearing, bleeding, and a risk of up to 30 times higher of infection with HIV, HPV, and many other bacteria and viruses, an activity which latex devices are notoriously poorly designed for and highly failure-prone, but which FLE lessons simply treat as just another form of sexual activity. Promoting the benefits of premarital sex and encouraging highly dangerous sexual activities is not something you should want 13,000 ninth grade students to be taught. It is not part of a culture of caring. Please do encourage students to make healthy life choices. Do not encourage students to make unhealthy ones. Delete or change FLE lessons that encourage unhealthy life choices. Make family life education a part of the culture of caring. Thank you."
The next speaker is Mariel Ramirez-Holken.
Good evening. My name is Mariel Ramirez-Holken. I'm part of the group morices for Fairfax County, and I'm a mother of a rising second grader and a preschooler. I'm speaking tonight about strategic goal two, and more specifically, the overarching strategy seven, which measures levels of behavioral, mental, and physical health of students. Well, I can attest that recess helps to improve these health measures as well as cognition, social and emotional benefits, and academic performance. We were excited to have FCPS support for our bill to get to greater flexibility for morices, and we were even more excited that we got the bill passed after working so hard. So, thank you, Dr. Bravand, and staff for working with diligence and quickly updating the FCPS recess regulation by doubling the minimum required amount from 15 to 30 minutes. Having mentioned this, we are here to ask, please add language to the new recess regulation to include a recommendation of 40 minutes of recess for elementary schools. Please follow and implement SHAG's recommendation of these 40 minutes. Adding a recommendation to the recess regulation would be consistent with previous versions that contain both a minimum and a recommendation. We understand that some schools may not have the capability to offer 40 minutes of recess, but tonight we're here for the schools that have the ability to provide more than 30 minutes. We had parents mentioning two important concerns. One, the school we are zoned for already has 30 minutes of recess. Well, the new recess law allows up to 50 minutes of recess to be counted at instructional time. Since there were already schools providing 30 minutes of recess with the previous regulation, then they could use a 40-minute recommendation to have room for more. And two, our principal will only implement what is written on the new policy. Most schools don't know how much more time they're allowed to provide since FCPS news release from June 7th only mentions that the new law allows at least 30 minutes. It doesn't mention it could be up to 50. This petition is crucial for every child sitting here and at home. Every child counts as every minute counts. Schools in Texas that work with Link Project implemented recess of 60 minutes spread out throughout the day and have seen improved on task behavior between 22% to 28%, as well as pro-social behavior, increased brain power and energy, decreased bullying, nurse visits, and absences. In our county, Mount Eagle Elementary School, which is a Title I school, implemented two 20-minute recesses this past year. They are seeing huge benefits on test and behavior. Even though they have small outdoor spaces, they make it work by having lower and upper grades outside at the same time in different areas of the school. Please add a recommendation of 40 minutes of recess to this new regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. I note that Mr. Nie has arrived. So, Mr. Nie, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening. I support recess. Today I'll talk about the theme about create nurturing and caring environment for our school system. One thing is to use our money wisely to ensure- One thing is to use our money wisely to ensure the contract system is fair and transparent to build a caring and nurturing culture. Two thousand and fifteen, the board has audited for contracting system, found one key deficiency, which is the overuse of the sole sourcing. We all know sole-source contracts invite fraud, abuse of public money, and also backdoor transactions. Today, I want to give you three tips or suggestions. Number one, starting from this year, 2018, you give us a disclosure. How do you take actions to reduce the sole sourcing? Tip number two, build a system, a database disclosing all the contract-granting process, including the vendors, the service provided, the start date, end date. As taxpayers, we deserve full transparency and disclosure. Number three is pay special attention to some entities have affiliations or special conflict interest. For instance, called Ad Leader Twenty-One, have you heard about this service provider? They are affiliated with Karen Garza's Battle for Kids. So, you don't want the conflict interest appearance or substance. And also, Jack Dale, another superintendent, was a special advisor for this service provider. So, be very careful when you provide a grant service to them. Lastly, I want to mention one name. His name is Mark Paul-Here. Mark Paul-Here is called a sex education consultant. In 2016, he drafted this transgender regulation, caused the public outcry and debate. The county has to suspend this program for two weeks. Do you know how Mark was hired? Again, through sole sourcing. And most egregiously, he was granted service through a verbal contract, without even a written contract. Clearly, the board has bypassed or violated the controls and scrutiny and due diligence. So, we need to do something. Two weeks ago, when you signed, approved the family life education, you caused public distrust and disgust. Just watch the WTOP and the Washington Post. Now is your time to get this thing right. Thank you.
The next speaker is Norman Hall. Mr. Hall?
Good evening, Chairman Strauss, members of the school board. I'm Norm Hall. I'm here to speak out about the caring culture element of the strategic plan. My comments echo what I said during citizen time on April 12th. As before, a detailed reading of the Caring Culture Planning document reveals a failure to acknowledge ongoing disparity in the outcomes and inclusion of special ed students. On October 12th, SEPTA President Diane Cooper-Gold testified at the public hearing on the Division Y Comprehensive Plan, pointing out the lack of specific planning to address the unmet needs of students with disabilities. On November 20th, I spoke during citizen time in support of the One Fairfax policy and similarly pointed out the gap between the reality and the promise. Between our appearances to this school board, SEPTA published a position paper regarding the FCPS strategic plan and strategic plan update. Some concerns which remain unaddressed by parts one and two of the strategic plan are noted. One, a recommendation to include specific and measurable plans with detailed activities and initiatives to systematically address academic performance inequities. Two, a recommendation to include specific initiatives to support the hiring and retention of highly qualified teachers and staff to support students in special ed and to ensure that recently hired special ed teachers have targeted skilled training and support to perform well in the highly individualized atmosphere of special ed. Three, a recommendation to establish a more holistic approach through data collection of social, emotional growth, life skills, positive behavior changes, and other academic criteria beyond SOL pass rates. Now is the fifth time SEPTA is formally calling for the strategic plan process to acknowledge the aggregate state of special ed. We must look at overall staffing needs, caseloads for mandated and non-mandated staff-student ratios, budget and program adequacy, availability and fidelity across the county, and at different age and grade levels. Let me be clear. At the individual level, we were thrilled to celebrate many case and program-level victories with an overflow audience at our first annual SEPTA awards program on June 9th. We appreciate that there are many individual stories of success. But we must consider the big picture. SEPTA has repeatedly pointed out the lack of consistency and fidelity with the administration of services across the county. We were struck by Superintendent Braybrand's comment during the March 12th work session at which he stated special ed is the Achilles' heel of FCPS. If this is known, why are we not consciously and deliberately making a plan for better data collection and analysis, mandatory specialized training for general and special ed teachers and administrators, and consistent availability and implementation of programs that have proven to work for our students? I look forward to discussion and request that those present remember that students with disabilities are not a separate silo group, but part of our whole school and life community, and that a truly caring culture would treat their unmet needs as we would any portion of our population that displays unequal outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrea Bayer.
I do remind people, we have very young children in the audience this evening.
Is that directed at me?
No, it's not. It's just in general.
Good evening. Realizing that tonight's topic is about FCPS's strategic plan and the creation of a caring culture, I ask FCPS and this board to very thoughtfully consider and carefully define the term "caring." And once defined, I ask the board to tell us all exactly who's going to be compelled to be caring and how such caring is to be implemented or imposed on the community. So, to this point, here's a quick, relevant, and very personal story. I have a very rare bone dysplasia called cranio-metaphyseal dysplasia, or CMD for short, and this dysplasia primarily affects the face, skull, long bones, depending upon the penetrance or severity. So, basically, when I was a child, I was one of those kids that when I entered a store or a restaurant or went anywhere in public, heads turned, people stared, fingers were pointed, and people whispered. And at times, people even dared to make rude comments to me or my parents while others dared to ask imposing questions. But rarely did strangers just look at me and regard me as if I was normal. Yet, when they did manage to do this, my heart would soar with happiness. And still, I thank God for those people, although they were very few and far between. By the way, I grew up here in Fairfax County. I went to Timber Lane Elementary School. I went to Whittier Junior High and then Falls Church High School. Now, when I was at Timber Lane, I must say that I felt pretty safe, mostly because the friends that I did have all knew and liked me for the real me, meaning that they did not judge me based on my looks, but simply liked me for who I was on the inside. But admittedly, there were just as many students at that school that did not like me, completely based on the way I looked, and had no intention of ever getting to know the real me. So, was I bullied? Oh, yeah. Was I bullied daily? Yes. Was I even hated? Yes. But if you were to ask me if I was a happy child, I would say, "Yeah." You see, the reason I was able to not only survive this period in my life, but actually be both happy and successful, was because no one let me be a victim. To my family, I was not a victim. To my friends, I was not a victim. And to my teachers and the school staff, I was not a victim. And to be clear, I made sure to never let those bullies who teased me see me play the victim. So, needless to say, there were no special meetings with me or about me with my teachers or school staff, nor were there special rules or accommodations made for me. I was given zero guidance counseling. There were no special programs. So, I ask, when you're developing your caring community program, please make sure not to determine that someone is a victim. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alan Talecki.
My name is Alan Talecki. I'm a resident of Fairfax County. I would like to provide input on the strategic plan for the creating of a caring culture. As you know, a caring culture can only be created by identifying and addressing the needs of the community. Two weeks ago, the same school board willfully ignored public comments against promoting scientifically and medically inaccurate information that sex is assigned at birth and that people can choose their sex based on feelings. This was roundly rejected by an eight-to-one margin by the participants who responded in email. Besides violating the Virginia Board of Education Guidelines B dot one-one, requiring medically accurate instructions, many in the public recognize the dangers of introducing false propaganda into an academic environment dedicated to the higher learning and injecting falsehoods into the medical fields where the rest of us rely on scientific and biological truth for lifesaving measures. Furthermore, the school board appears to violate Virginia Board of Education Guidelines One-B for broad-based community involvement by rigging the FLE CAC with the homogeneous religious bigots who voted to ban clergy from the FLE program. However, the most disturbing part of the out-of-control sex ed program is that it exceeds the Virginia State Guidelines, such that it clearly should require full disclosure and consent of parent to the harmful and intrusive nature of the eighty-hour controversial program. Yet, this school board believes innocent children should automatically be enrolled in it, even though most parents have no idea what is being taught in an ever-changing and expanding program, nor are we given warnings of the false misleading and harmful medical health and safety information in it. Did you know that half of the Fairfax County population is now Latino, Asian, Muslim, and other ethnic minorities that are diametrically opposed to this controversial sex ed program for many reasons? However, because of language, customs, and communication barriers, and with a very shabby, if not chaotic, effort by the school system at the start of this school year, these ethnic minorities have no idea that they are automatically enrolling their children in something they earnestly oppose, nor do they know that they can opt out. Sadly, the question to be asked is, is Fairfax County public school system automatically enrolling their children without the full disclosure of the parental consent according to the rights of the parents established in Virginia Code One dash four-twenty dot one? I'll conclude. Why do the schools require parental permission for a field trip, music orchestration participation, taking prescription medications, sports participation, but not a controversial eighty-hour sex program?
Are you summing up?
This is not to create a caring culture. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kathleen Mallard.
Superintendent Braybrand, school board, members of the administration, and Dr. Ivy, congratulations, if she's still here. I don't know if she is. Tonight, I will speak on the topic of a caring culture as described in the FCPS strategic plan. In the copy of my remarks that I just gave Beverly Madeja, who's a wonderful person, she's helped us so much, there's a link to an article by a friend of mine, Stella Morabito, a respected expert on communist propaganda and history. She understands the importance of personal relationships as a critical source of knowledge and how these relationships determine our perceptions of the larger world. Ms. Morabito explains that relationships based on mutual trust and affection in a caring environment are the ultimate source of power. However, those who seek to attain and hold on to power understand that these bonds must be destroyed. In her article, Transgenderism, Children, and Cognitive Chaos, featured in the spring 2018 issue of the Human Life Review, she points out that forcing children, particularly young children, to focus on their gender identity unleashes the power of suggestion and coercive persuasion, which confuses them and can lead to cognitive chaos, not to a caring culture. In the hope that you will read this article, I put the link in my remarks, I'll pose a series of questions, sort of like a pre- and post-test. I hope they will encourage you to think about the consequences of the recent FLE changes, and do they foster a caring culture or just the opposite? So, here we go. You can nod yes or shake your head no if you care to. How does the FLE curriculum foster a caring culture when it de-sexes and dehumanizes children and tells them, all of them, that they may not see themselves as physically either male or female? Question two, can you see how conformity with the FLE curriculum shows no caring for family cohesion, but instead possibly drives a wedge between parent and child and is a form of separating children from their parents? Number three, is imposing transgenderism on small children in their tender years of cognitive growth an indicator of a caring culture? I don't think so. It's cruel beyond words. Number four is making parents out to be the bad guys if they don't agree with the FLE curriculum topics, or if they try to prevent their children, I've just about finished, from taking puberty blockers or having surgery. Is that conducive to a caring culture? Well, I'll answer that for you. No, it's not. There are a couple more questions, and maybe you all, when you get the copy of my remarks, would like to answer them. And I'll be back, and we can have a post-test. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time this evening.
The next speaker is Bridget Phelps.
Dr. Braybrand, board, thank you so much for the opportunity to present this evening. I'm here for a slightly different reason, but I do feel that it falls within the scope of the caring culture. As a Fairfax County school student from elementary through high school, I am now honored as the Director of Youth Programs for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society to be a partner in education with many of our Fairfax County schools and their students. This is a service learning program that we institute across our area. I feel that it really helps represent to the students the opportunity of giving back and helping others, as well as involving their outside community. And the real reason that I'm here today is I'm pleased to present that of the four hundred schools that participated in Pennies for Patients this past year, Colin Powell, in Region Four, I believe, I may be incorrect on that, was our number-one elementary school, raising over twelve thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars for cancer research. So, I want to thank you guys again. I do see the difference. This year, we are including a new STEM curriculum for all our participating schools that we're very excited about, and that will be elementary through middle school. So, hopefully, we will be able to continue this partnership, and I just wanted to thank you both, oh, thank you all, for your time.
Thank you for the good news. Next, we have two video testimonies. The first is presented by Monique Rudy.
I want to reinforce the comments shared by Ms. Evans and Ms. Corbett Sanders. This board did, at its work session, talk about the merits of maintaining the term clergy in the language. So, even though it was recommended by FLE, again, from a streamlined point of view, that once you start to name off, you know, trusted adults that... view, that once you start to name off, you know, trusted adults that they kids should think of, then maybe you're going to forget others that you should cite in there.
I feel when I read this, it implies a judgment. When you tell a child that they're questioning, I mean, hetero children, do we tell them to go talk to their clergy? I think when we put religion in there, it is a judgment. And I don't like it. I think it makes them think that there's something wrong with them. To say to go talk to a trusted adult, you should talk to a trusted adult at this age when you're questioning everything, but to imply that they should go talk to a clergy implies that there's something wrong, and they need help, and they don't need that kind of thing.
We need to listen to the community, even if we don't like what they are telling us. The views of the members of this board are not more important than the views of the parents of our children.
We are partners with parents and the education of their children. We are not in charge of the child's education. Parents are.
Please let Mrs. Schultz speak.
The volume of comments received on this set of FLE changes are a dramatic departure from comments received in previous years.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Braybrand and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby. I am a teacher in Fairfax County and current president of FCPS Pride. I want to speak of caring culture. Strategy Five, which speaks of a culture which is responsive to stakeholders, will mean more investment by all people in the system. Strategy Six, which aims at improved communication, will lead to better outcomes. And Strategy Seven, with its idea of overall well-being and improved quality of life, must be the underpinning philosophy of any institution which works with children. On June 14, when a diverse group of community members came to support inclusive FLE curriculum and you approved it unanimously, we took steps towards that goal of caring culture. And that diverse audience were teachers, parents, and students, Buddhists, Catholics, Muslims, Jews, Quakers, Protestants, Unitarians, and atheists, people of many of the ethnic, racial, and linguistic mix that make up Fairfax County. Some of the members of FCPS Pride, who are Muslim and Catholic, express regret and sadness that their communities are being used as a foil to oppose inclusion for transgender students. They say that no one person speaks for the whole community, and no group of people speaks for them. Intersectionality is real. In the same way, I do not speak for all LGBTQ and allied people in this school system. Fairfax is a big place, and we cannot put people into boxes. I have a suggestion in terms of Strategy Six, improved communication, as it relates to input for next year to the FLE Act report. I think our blind email system, FLEComments@FCPS.edu, is broken. We have no way of knowing whether those 1,300 emails came from people inside our county or if they are representative of opinion within the county. The blind email method just tells us who has a larger statewide or nationwide action alert network, which is not the information we need. Perhaps an actual survey, as one board member said, would serve, or a Google form with an honor question in which people attest that they are residents or employees would work instead. Thank you for listening.
Thank you to all those who came out to speak to us. Just so that people know, seeking advice from clergy was added back in. We have Boy Scouts with us here tonight. I would recognize Jacob Charlesworth and Luca Mosby from Troop 1347 and 1547. If you'd like to stand up so we can recognize you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I will call on Ms. Darnett Kofex for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who threatened a staff member and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous. Thank you. Next, I will call on Mrs. Schultz for a motion.
I move to grant, in part, the school reassignment appeal of a student who is charged with a serious criminal offense related to an alleged community-based incident, and to modify the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? Okay, that is Wilson, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Schultz, Darnett Kofex, Keys-Gamara. Opposed? Abstention. Ms. Palchak, thank you. That motion passes. Next, I call on Ms. Palchak for a motion.
I move that the school board adopt the 2019-2020 standard school year calendar.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Hines. Ms. Palchak, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I will try to be brief. First of all, I really want to thank and explain the process a little bit. So I want to thank Dr. Ramey, Michael, and your staff for your countless hours working with not just our community through the survey, but also through our calendar committee. This is the second round now of a committee of 21 invited members from the community, from our principals, our employee associations, teachers, our superintendents, FCCPTA, I hope I haven't missed anyone, even our professional development office, that met for three meetings in order to review the survey that was sent to the community and to give the recommendations for the 2019-20 calendar. I also wanted to just give a little bit of a sense of the survey results, which is what the committee looked at as they met for three sessions to provide their recommended calendar, which is what is coming forward today. There were five questions on the survey. It was filled out by almost, more than 51,000 members of both our employee and our family communities. I'll go briefly through the five questions. The first one was asked whether we prefer to start the school year essentially before Labor Day, one or two weeks, or after Labor Day. In this year, we had more than 50%, so I believe we had 59% of all respondents said that they wanted to begin after Labor Day, either one or two weeks after Labor Day, with 72%, sorry, before Labor Day, before Labor Day, thank you, 72% of employees and 51% of families. And that does not include the more than 30%, no, more than 8% who had no preference. So this is, this year, we, after having tried it for one year, it looks like more than 50%, more than half of our employees and families, all agree that we should, as long as we can, continue to start before Labor Day. In addition, a question two, asked about winter break, and here we had 52% of respondents saying that they wanted to keep winter break as two weeks. So that was what the committee worked with. Question three, asked about spring break, whether it should be a fixed week or whether we should continue to have it a shifting week that occurs sometime between mid-March and mid-April, and 57% said to keep it as is, shifting. Finally, question number four, and here we had a little bit more of a breakdown. I know this is a question that we discuss often on our board when we look at the calendar, was our preference for several different holidays. So we asked about Columbus Day, Veterans Day, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and Presidents' Day. The two, overall, the two holidays that had more than 50% saying that they wanted schools to be closed were the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and Presidents' Day. For Columbus Day and Veterans Day, it was very similar in that there was less than 50%, 42% asked for school to be closed, and only 3% and 4% asked for a half day and 34% for a full day. So the committee did bring forward a recommendation to close on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and on Presidents' Day, but this calendar will show having Columbus Day and Veterans' Day being school day. So I know there's amendment coming forward to change one of those, but this was the committee's overall recommendation based on the survey. And then finally, the fifth question, which was quite surprising, I know to those of us who first saw the survey results on the Public Engagement Committee, and then the committee did go ahead and follow this, except for the very last day of school, which was the preference of how to handle teacher work days. So for next year's calendar, we did include, from the last decision that was made, was to have three-hour early releases. The overwhelming result, 70% said, please don't do that again. Both families and employees prefer to have three full days off as opposed to six half days or five half days. So this calendar does go back and say, all right, we will not do the three-hour early releases, and instead, it does include the three full days off for students so that teachers can have that time for professional development and teacher work days. So that is what was discussed by the committee, and I am bringing forward the results of three very productive, thoughtful, and engaging discussions. I really did appreciate and heard from one of the community members today saying how impressed she was with the level of discussion and thought brought forward by staff and by the committee. So that is what is being presented for the 2019-20 school year. 2020 school year also, at the request of our board, to give families and staff longer heads up to prepare, to prepare their vacations and their professional development time. And so this is, to be clear, not for next school year, but for the 2019-20-20 school year.
Excellent summary. Thank you. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to this?
Not at this time.
All right, we will go on. Mr. Moon, you would like to make some comments first.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I originally intended to present an amendment, but after submitting the amendment, I had an opportunity to have a conversation with a superintendent. The intent behind my motion was primarily to help those seniors who are applying early to be able to get at least preliminary grades by November 1st so that they could submit. Then I understand that there are about 10,000 early applications submitted this year by seniors. 10,000 does not mean 10,000 students, because some of our students apply at multiple schools by November 1, but there were about 10,000 applications submitted by November 1, and most of the schools want to have at least preliminary grades to be submitted along with the applications. So my intent behind my motion that I wanted to propose was to help those seniors to get, give the message out to teachers that we do really want, not that our teachers are already doing it, but just to make sure that they provide those preliminary grades to seniors. But Dr. Braybrand has assured me that he will give guidance to all the teachers to do so. So with that, I don't need to present my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Then I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for an amendment.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Strauss. I move to amend the main motion by changing Thursday, October 3, 2019, to a regular school day, and Monday, October 14, 2019, to a professional development day slash student holiday.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. When we adopted the pre-Labor Day start to our calendar, we got a lot of input from parents who said, whatever you do, we need to have predictability. We need stability in our planning. And so with that in mind, last year, when we looked at the calendar recommendations, which eliminated the October holiday, the traditionally Columbus Day holiday, we put it back in as a workday and preserved it as a holiday for our students in the 2018-2019 calendar. And so what this amendment does is provides for that stability of planning and consistency of schedules for our families, and it actually preserves a long weekend, which is traditionally used by sports and arts organizations for tournaments and for major competitions in the fall. It also provides for a little bit of relief in the first quarter, which is traditionally the longest quarter for our students. And so that's why I'm putting forward this recommendation. And I also bring it to you after having spoken both with staff and the leaders of the teachers' associations who felt comfortable with this amendment.
Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, Madam Chair, that a lot of activities, family activity that go on on the Columbus Day, as Ms. Corbett Sanders has stated, is a time-honored and also time-endured tradition. And I fondly remember when my kids were somewhat younger, that having a Columbus Day off was basically sacrosanct.
Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to?
Yeah, I have no problem with this. I think one of my conversations with a colleague was, when was the last time we didn't have Columbus Day off? So the one problem I do have is calling it sacrosanct. The very people who have allowed this to be a sacrosanct holiday are, in fact, our veterans, and we're about to approve a calendar that had more support for Veterans' Day off than for Columbus Day, or at least the same. And the fact that this board continues to message to the public that it's simply too hard when Prince William, as a neighboring jurisdiction, has found a way to honor Veterans' Day, you know, actions matter. And the actions of this board have, year in and year out, messaged that we can't figure out a way to put a national holiday where every other national holiday is on our calendar, we can't figure out a way to put Veterans' Day into our schedule. And it's a choice. We're literally choosing convenience instead of finding a way to honor veterans. And I do find it problematic. I do support this amendment because actually, I think the break in the calendar at that point is good. It's a good, healthy break for families. And if families are spending time together, I'm pro-family for them to be participating in activities with their children, but I'm also pro-veteran, I'm pro-liberty, and we are not messaging effectively. We don't, the reminder is that the story that we have to take Veterans' Day off, if we take Veterans' Day off, we won't have programs, is an inappropriate message because, of course, we teach children about presidents, and they're not in school on Presidents' Day. We teach children about Martin Luther King, and they're not in school on Martin Luther King Day. King Day, and we do all kinds of turkey talk, leading up to Thanksgiving, and we're not in school on Thanksgiving. So, there are opportunities for improvement that this board could choose, and we, we're doing it a year out. This is the beautiful thing that Dr. Braybrand has worked with us on, is to try to message to our families well in advance to establish summer schedules and travel, and, and all things that are healthy and appropriate for us to message to our staff and to our, our families. And yet, we still can't get this one thing right, and I find, I find that unfortunate.
Ms. Kiesgmar, did you wish to speak?
I, I just would like to respond. We did have a robust discussion regarding the calendar, and I specifically reached out to my colleague regarding possibly working on this, and I really didn't hear anything regarding that. I was surprised we didn't have an amendment today. But I just want the public to know that there is no staunch unfairness or desire not to recognize veterans. I'm the daughter of a veteran, my son is at West Point, and, and we have a number of people who certainly are willing to have that discussion, it just didn't happen. So, I want the, the public to know that we certainly are willing to discuss things, and we certainly also support our veterans.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, just want to make sure I'm clear. So, what we're doing basically is taking the professional development day out of the first week of November and putting it
In October.
In October as the Monday, as Columbus Day.
Yes.
So, teachers will be in school on Columbus Day. This is a holiday for kids and their families, but not for teachers, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I, you say you checked that with the teacher associations, and, and I guess, Dr. Braybrand, you don't see any problem that you can anticipate with, because what we have, the way we have it now, with the two days, professional development and teacher work day on that first week of October, that's, that's closer to the middle of the quarter than putting the professional development on the 14th, but do you see any downside to the change?
Can you remind me, Chase, this year, well, how was, was Columbus Day, what day was Columbus Day this year designated for our staff?
Teacher work day.
It was a teacher work day.
Or PD day, one of the two, yeah.
So, we've already, we've already had that occur, so I, I don't see, and I heard, I did not hear anything from the community or from our teachers regarding our work of doing it that way this year, and I don't think it would be an impact for the 19-20 calendar.
Okay, thank you. So, we're just basically trading a four-day weekend for two three-day weekends for families, one of them being Columbus Day weekend, so, all right, thank you.
That's correct.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the amendment being brought forward by Ms. Corbett Sanders. I, I think that, that it is telling, I don't think we, I can't recall a year where we haven't included Columbus Day in the schedule as a, as a day off for the children, and coincidental with the federal holiday and the vast majority of employees having the day off. I am a little troubled that Ms. Heinz has mentioned that this, this, teachers are all going to be in school, and I, I guess, did we, in the, in the, in the Public Engagement Committee efforts to reach out and have the meetings with the communities, I, I don't have the data, the polling data, but maybe, Ms. Palchek, if you could just, did we have, do we have information on that aspect of it?
Yes, so, and Dr. Ray, may please correct me if I'm wrong, sorry, did you want, just for employees?
Yeah, I guess what I'd like to understand is, is, you know, I mean, did, do the employees, how did they, what was their opinion on, on having Columbus Day and, and having it be a professional development day for them?
Well, so, the question was not asked as a professional development day, if that's correct. The question was simply, it was the same survey sent to employees and families, and it asked, what is your preference for the following days? Full day of school, half day of school, no school, no preference? So, those were the four choices. It didn't specify whether it would be a holiday, a holiday for students, but a professional development day, or a teacher work day, and students out of school. That was not specified. We were really trying to keep this simple. All questions were answered by all respondents, which is great, so.
All right, so, I mean, maybe we just don't really have an insight exactly how this will be, how it would reflect back to us as a board from the teachers.
However, I do want to ask that, the employees did have a much higher percentage of having it not be a school day than did the families. So, the, the employees responded, 52% of employees wanted no school on Columbus Day, and 38% of family, of families said no school. That data we do have.
So, the teachers wanted it not to have a school day?
Not a school day, much higher than even the families, so.
So, they have signaled, actually at a higher rate than the families, that they would like to have that day off as well. You know, I'm, you know, I appreciate this amendment because of the consistency issue in past years. I, I guess the, the data we have, I'm not sure it truly supports this change specifically, how it's proposed, and I'm not sure, my recollection was that actually, the numbers were pretty similar when the question was asked with respect to Veterans' Day, and, and I, and I wonder whether or not we had a fulsome conversation as to whether we should, you know, reconsider including Veterans' Day in our calendar, because I think Ms. Schultz makes a great point. We have tremendous population within Fairfax County of active and retired military, and I think that it is a decision of the board to choose one over another. So, I guess I'm a, a little bit on the fence here as I sit, as I, as I talk, talk myself through this, but I do support Columbus Day. I, I wish that we could have had a little more time to talk about it, I guess, and really sort of flesh out some of the issues related to your amendment, that we could have discovered the teachers' perspective on this maybe in a little more depth, and also had to have a discussion about Veterans' Day.
Okay, I will call for the vote on the amendment, and it is to change Thursday, October 3, 2019, to a regular school day, and Monday, October 14, 2019, to professional development day, student holiday. All those in favor of the amendment? That motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, we are back to the main motion as amended, and I will call for the vote on the main motion as amended. And is there a second? There is a second, okay, so we've got everybody on the table, great. Okay, so, all those in favor of the calendar as amended. Okay, that is Mr. Wilson, Ms. Palchek, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Heinz, Darnak Kofex, Kiesgmar, opposed, abstention. Abstention, Ms. Schultz, thank you. That motion passes. Next, I will call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the strategic plan goal two, caring culture report, as detailed in the agenda item.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. McElveen. Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Thank you. The Fairfax County Public Schools Strategic Plan, called IGNITE, has four major goals, which define the role of all FCPS staff members in leaving the commitment to our staff, students, and community. Those four goals are student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. Each year, the school board is updated on these four goals and gets to formally approve goals reports. This year's goal to report, which is caring culture report, was briefly presented to the school board at its meeting on June 12, and then subsequently discussed in great detail by the board members at the work session on June 18. Under goal two, the FCPS commits to foster a responsive, caring, and inclusive culture where all feel valued, supported, and hopeful. There are three overarching strategies, overarching strategy number five, six, and seven. Overarching, under overarching strategy number five, FCPS is to establish a school division and culture that is highly responsive to stakeholders and creates a model environment in which to learn and work. Overarching strategy number six states that FCPS fosters active and positive communication and engagement among students, staff, families, and the community in order to ensure that all stakeholders are engaged and well-informed partners. The third overarching strategy, strategy number seven states that FCPS promotes overall health and well-being of students and staff in order to encourage healthy life choices and an increased quality of life. The goal to report presented to the school board discusses major strategic plan activities taking place during the corneal and reflects the data that has been utilized in making the decisions driving the work underlying goal two. In addition, the report provides an update on the monitoring metrics and the current work that supports the goal two. As a part of the board's discussion, the board was also presented with 2017 and 2018 employee engagement survey data and their analysis. The board decided to schedule another work session in the future to discuss the survey. With that, I would like to ask my colleagues to vote and accept the report.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Would you like to speak to your second?
Nothing further.
Seeing no members wishing to speak, then I will call for a vote to approve the, the goal two, strategic plan, caring culture. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous with Ms. Schultz away from the table. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, approve the minutes of the May 24, 2018, regular school board meeting. 6.02, approve and award a contract to the University of Virginia for the provision of the accelerated certification cohort educational program, effective May 1, 2018, through June 30, 2023, and authorize the division superintendent or deputy superintendent to execute and administer such contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03, approve the appointment of Michael Burke to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2018. 6.04, approve the appointment of Lee Burton and Marty Smith to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019. 6.05, confirm the separations for the period beginning May 1, 2018, and ending May 31, 2018. 6.06, reappoint Mr. Dan Warco as citizen member of the audit committee for a two-year term ending January 30, 2020, June 30, 2020. 6.07, appoint individuals to serve on citizen advisory committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Superintendent matters, Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. Last week, I got a chance to go to the Summer Meals kickoff at Hudson Elementary in Hernan. It was a real blast. It was a wonderful opportunity to showcase our free barbecue program, Food for Every Child to Eat During Summer, which is funded through our U.S. Department of Agriculture. And I just want you to know, Rodney Taylor's just done such a wonderful job. He has really set a new bar of excellence and a focus on equity through our food and nutrition program services. This program's going to have a free barbecue lunch for all kids 18 and under. If you're an adult, it's $2, and it's going to be available at 13 sites around Fairfax County Public Schools from June 18 to August 27. You can find the locations for those listening tonight at www.fcpss.edu. So, we really want to continue to support our community during these summer months, and we really hope folks will come out and visit those sites. We're also happy that FCPS received four awards in the 2018 Publications and Electronic Media Contest sponsored by the National School Public Relations Association. So, here's the areas we won in. We got an Award of Excellence, which is the highest award, for FCS Spotlight Blog, and this entry included three separate blogs. It was Madeleine's Mentoring Day, A Caring Culture, and Connecting Generations. We also won the highest category for Call Me Jane, which was a video produced in-house. And we received two honorable mentions for our videos on Moving From Fear to Hope, Project Hope, and Fern and Rosemary, Fuzzy Friends at Glasgow Middle School Library. So, really proud of all their work. We have wrapped up our school year, but we're busy with many of our summer programs. I do hope that many of our community and our folks will get a chance next week to celebrate with family the 4th of July and celebrate our country. We are blessed to be in an amazing country and in an amazing county here in Fairfax, and I thank you all for, the next time we meet will have been a full year of me being here as superintendent. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time and look forward to the beginning of gearing up for another school year as we spend the summer getting ready to gear up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I will call on Ms. Heinz for a report from the Audit Committee.
Thank you. Yes, the Audit Committee had our monthly meeting last night, actually, where we received updates from the Auditor General. We received, we had the final conversation in preparation for the board's vote on the FY19 Risk Assessment and Audit Plan, which the board will vote on next month, and we will actually discuss at the July 23 work session. So, I, I encourage board members to take a look at that. It's been sent around by the Auditor General, and we want to have a robust discussion about it on the 23rd. The Audit Committee also received reports on the FY18 Adult and Community Education Audit, and the FY18 Facilities Maintenance Audit, and I think we had seven school business turnover audits. So, all the FY18 audit work was completed on time, and as a result, our July 25 Audit Committee meeting has been canceled because we have nothing left to talk about.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Board matters, I will start with Ms. Kiesgmar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, too, had the opportunity to attend the event at Hutchinson Elementary, and I was excited to, along with our chair, Ms. Strauss, and Ryan McElveen, and it was just a really wonderful and fun event to see people coming out and just enjoying one another, and, and I especially enjoyed the, what was it, the calves, the little cows they had out there for everybody to touch.
Two little cows.
I took a picture. I, I, I took a picture, I didn't, I didn't touch, even though I'm a mother of boys, I just like, oh, that's cute. And I also had the pleasure of participating in a panel on school safety in the Commonwealth along with Francisco Duran and a, a number of our other supporters and other county officials, so that was fun as well. But I'm looking forward to continuing, having a little break in the summer. I wish everybody just a fun time, but also, my thoughts and prayers to those in Maryland. We've had yet another mass shooting, and it's just a very sad time.
Ms. Darnak Kofex?
Thank you, yes, Ms. Kiesgmar, you did a nice job as, as well, did Dr. Duran, for the school safety in the Commonwealth meeting put on by the Communities of Trust, so I appreciated your time and enjoyed hearing from you as well as other members of the panel. And I also want to thank everyone who has served this past year on our school board advisory committees. We have had the pleasure of listening to your recommendations over these past few weeks, and as always, I'm impressed by your diligent work and insightful recommendations, so thank you very much for all the time you've spent on that this past year. And also, I want to wish everyone a Happy Independence Day.
Ms. Schultz?
Yeah, I just want to welcome, we have, I know it was on the consent agenda, but we have two new appointees to the FPAC, and all, all who applied, I just want to say, I'm, I'm grateful to the members of the CPDC for making another meeting, another closed meeting in order to review those applications, to welcome the two new members to FPAC, to plead on behalf of my colleague, Ms. Darnak Kofax, to the Lee community, if anybody wants to be on FPAC, the Facilities Planning Advisory Committee. It's an open, it's an open invitation to apply and help us with the heavy load. The thing that keeps me up is 27 and a half million square feet of infrastructure, and I think we're going to breach 190,000 students this fall, so any help we can get I think we're going to breach 190,000 students this fall, so any help we can get from our wonderful volunteers is most, most appreciated. I do want to say to my Lake Braddock community, I know Ms. McGlocklin is traveling abroad, she's not here. We're so pleased that Dr. Braybrand and Dr. Atwater have placed the confidence of interim for a year at Lake Braddock. Danny Meyer is an, I don't know if I can say old, a seasoned retired administrator who is going to come in and, and hold, and hold, and hold the ship steady and maybe quell some waters, and I'm very much looking forward to, and I know next week is a, is a meet and greet, or is a holiday week, but there is going to be a meet and greet for Mr. Meyer on Monday from 3:30 to 4:30. For those who, of you who are going to be in town and would appreciate the opportunity to meet him, I will, I will make the effort to be there. Ms. McGlocklin will still be on foreign travel and unfortunately sense her regrets that she will not be able to join us. I don't know if Dr. Braybrand himself is going to be there.
If I could just make a point of privilege, I'm not sure about my agenda that evening. I think we have another county meeting around the MOU and SROs, but I did want the public to know that we'll have multiple opportunities beyond just that Monday for Principal Meyer to engage with the community prior to the start of the school year, and Dr. Atwater and I are working on coordinating that schedule now.
I certainly appreciate that, and I know it was tough to figure out whether you would do an open house on a holiday week, but I think, you know, for his first day there, it's an excellent move. Don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. So certainly we'll have other opportunities. And finally, I did attend the community panel with the Board of Supervisors and several of my colleagues on school safety and security. I do want to let my colleagues and the public know that I've asked, we, when we had the safety and security report on our all-day work session, it was originally only scheduled for an hour. It was extended to an hour and a half. We almost doubled that. We went three hours and did not get into many of the recommendations. So I have asked that we have additional work session time, more time to talk about it, particularly in light of the events today. One of the concerns that I had was that it did not include administrative buildings, which was part of my original motion, that the assessment not only include our 198 schools, but also administrative facilities. And so I do think that there is a lot of work left to be done, and I think that more robust questions from our, from our board, if we had the time to explore some of the things like the safety and security officers, would they be more appropriately under safety and security as opposed to reporting independently to every building administrator? Things like that, I think, are, just remain to be a part of a discussion. And so I hope that the Chair and the Superintendent find the time to give us the gift of time to continue that discussion, because it is so important to so many, not just parents and students, but also our employees. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
I yield my time to Mr. Moon tonight.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Sines, for your time. You know, Madam Chair, for the last couple of weeks, I've been spending some time to watch something that happens only once in every four years, is the World Cup Games. And especially yesterday, we basically, I did my day job, but we did shut down our operation in the morning to watch the game on a large screen with using the projector connecting to their computer. There were a couple of very important games for me to watch, and, and I just certainly hoped that was rooting for Mexico is ranked number 15 in the world to be Sweden, which is ranked number 24. But at the same time, I wanted to have this world-ranked 57th team to be a defending champion, which happened 2 to 0. I was so happy about that. But however, since Mexico lost to Sweden by 3 to 0, my team, world ranked 57, which just beat defending champion by 2 to 0, didn't advance to round of 16. Regardless of that, I'll be watching round of 16 games starting from Saturday. So if I don't answer your phone call right away, just assume that I'm watching World Cup Games.
And now rooting for Argentina.
Thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I had the opportunity to participate with Chairman Strauss at a Joint Board of Supervisors, School Board, and Board of the Northern Virginia Community College discussion on Tuesday, which was just fascinating. And I encourage people that are not aware of all of the new and great things that Northern Virginia Community College is doing in providing opportunities for our students to have lifelong learning and to focus some of their activities, their academic activities, on cutting-edge careers such as the newly released Associate's Degree in Web Design, which is a partnership between Northern Virginia Community College and Amazon, that they really should take a fresh look at the opportunities that are available with Northern Virginia Community College. And I was especially pleased to hear about the increased partnership and opportunities for our students. We rolled out some dual enrollment in cybersecurity with NOVA at Mount Vernon High School last year, and in listening to the provost of the school, they were talking about increased opportunities for the Fairfax County students and the important relationship between Fairfax County Public Schools and the community college. So it was a great conversation, and I look, look forward to many more in that area. Additionally, I want to give a shout out and a thank you to the Fairfax County Public Schools Foundation. This past week, they awarded 28 grants to teachers, and these teacher grants resulted in $45,500, going out to teachers as they trial new ways of presenting curriculum, new ways of community building, and just all sorts of exciting projects that our teachers have developed their proposals and submitted it to the foundation for approval and funding. And I look forward to seeing the foundation do even more of that in the future.
Mr. McElveen?
Pass.
Ms. Palczek?
I just briefly want to thank our community partners, the Literacy Council of Northern Virginia, based in Providence District at James Lee Community Center, who invited me to their annual awards reception. And I have to say, it was hard not to cry. You had parent, many parents, every, you know, every language is their base language from across the county, across the world, who participate in their programming and take classes from volunteer teachers and who are asked, tasked to write an essay at the end of their class, for every single class. The essays, along with their photos, often sharing their life story, are posted and will be there for the next class to read in a beautiful display. And three of their students were voted to be recognized for special awards and a new one for their recently retired director. And you just had stories of how it has changed their life to be able to go through these programs, to have teachers dedicated to them, to feel that they can now help their students with homework, that they can be involved in their, in their community, that they can be more engaged in their small businesses, and it was just, I was just blown away. So I know we do a lot of great work in our adult education, Adult ESO, and we do have some pretty incredible community partners who are doing this, supporting our, many of our parents and our community members. So I just want to thank them for the tireless work they, they do, and that supports the work of FCPS as well. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to wish everyone who's going to celebrate the Fourth of July next week a joyful and safe Fourth of July holiday. It is going to be potentially very hot, so everyone be sure to take that in consideration. And then, the only other thing I wanted to mention is that this board, all of our thoughts and prayers are with the victims of the families of the terrible Annapolis shooting today, and it's another tragic day, unfortunately, in the news, and we're thinking about them here.
Thank you. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider personnel matters, specifically the performance of a specific public officer pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and to dispense with the attendance of the Superintendent or its designee pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-1-69 during a portion of all of that meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? Thank you. The board is in closed meeting.